It is time, let's call to meeting the order called the meeting to order the January 6th, 2021 Corvail Planning and Zoning Meeting is now called to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes. Wenman. Ron, are you still on?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Wilson.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Wen.
Present.
Nudson. Fessler.
Here.
And Aaron's.
Here.
Any corrections to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Moved by Wilson, seconded.
Here.
Seconded by Fessler. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Any corrections to the November 4th, 2020 meeting? Hearing none? Do I have a motion to approve the meetings from the November 4th, 2020 meeting?
Moved.
Moved by Wen- seconded.
Second.
Second by Wenman. We will now vote on the approval of the minutes from the November 4th meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Commissioner Knutson is on. Item number five, recognize the new chair. I'm Paul Arns, I'm the chair for 2021. We do need to elect a co-chair for 2021. Do we have any volunteers? Laura?
There is no one else.
I second.
All right. All those in favor of Laura being Laura Taylor being the co-chair for 21, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Before we get into the public hearing, we asked that anybody wanting to speak, we're in a little unique situation here. If you're in the house, step to the podium, sign in, state your name and address. If you're on the Zoom call, we'll try to figure out how to get to this, but we'll want you to sit state your name and state your address. If you're here representing a group or an organization, please let us know that. And if you have multiple people from a group, please elect one person to kind of speak on behalf of that organization. So it can continue to keep things moving along. I will now open the public hearing on, oh, item number six. Public hearing request for Scanlon Farms LLC to consider approving a R-P-U-D-A residential planned unit development, site plan, and preliminary plat for Forever Green Heights. I will now open the public hearing on this item. If anybody would like to speak on behalf of this item, for or against, now is your time.
If I may, my name's Caleb Smith with McClure, here representing Kaiser Holdings, who's the contract buyer on this property. We, I'm the also the kind of the applicant, so to speak, as we've worked through this process with city staff. So maybe it makes sense for me to take the lead here. Again, thank you, everybody, tonight for considering this project. We've been working with staff on this for quite a while, and I think we've made some good revisions to get the plan to where it is tonight in front of you. And I believe we have a very good plan that's consistent to both your comprehensive plan as well as the intent of the developer for this property. Tonight before you is a 200 acre development, and that 200 acres does exclude the school site that is just north of this property. And 200 acres of mostly residential. And within this property, we are proposing to have around 1,000 units, which provides a density of about 4.8 units per acre. When we started planning this project, it was very important for us to provide a variety of different price points throughout the development, as well as to try and come up with a plan that would meet the land use plans for the city. And so we began looking at the comprehensive land use plan, which outlined this area as a mixture of low, medium, and high-density residential. Just looking at this property and under the comprehensive land use plan as low-density residential allow for up to six units per acre. So our current plan, as we have it being at 4.8, we felt like from a density load perspective, made a lot of sense. We also kind of took a look at the previous plans that had been kind of floated around this property. But most importantly, the zoning that was in place on this ground before the PUD was zoning was put in place, which was R1. The R1 zoning doesn't have a density cap, but does require a minimum of 8,000 units per or 8,000 square foot per lot. If you kind of divide that over an acre, that's a little over five units an acre. So again, this this development seemed to be in line with the zoning that was originally in place before the PUD zoning was put down. As we all know, there's two major roads that surround the property. We've got North Liberty Road kind of on the southwest side and Dubuque Street that kind of goes along the northeast side. As we started planning the ground, we knew it was important to try and protect the existing residential to the north and east of the development. And as you can see within our master plan, we have pushed a majority of the single-family residential to that northeast side. We've actually taken some multi-family units that were planned along the southwest side in the comprehensive plan and moved them more interior just to kind of decrease the impact surrounding the property. The, this technique is pretty common, especially with estate lots around the perimeter of a site. So that is kind of how we, yes, thank you, Dave. We also pushed some open space park ground, specifically along Dubuque Street and on the south on Rustic as well to further lessen the impact of the surrounding property owners around this site. This property also does have Forever Green Road that kind of bisects the property, so to speak, through the property, connects Dubuque and North Liberty. We have looked at that road as well as the existing conditions of the traffic around the site as how this impact, this development would impact traffic around the property. And while, yes, this development will increase traffic as every development will do from an overall just traffic volume. The actual improvements we're proposing at specifically at Dubuque and Rustic, as well as along North Liberty and Forever Green, should dramatically improve the traffic flow through those intersections once those improvements are in place. We did complete a traffic study, obviously, being COVID year, it was very difficult to get fresh new data because traffic flows were not consistent to what we've seen in past history. We were able to get some pretty good recent information from the DOT and the city on some counts they had around here, as well as the current MPO's traffic model, as we analyze all the traffic and have developed a plan that shows how this development will impact the overall model and the operation of all those roads. This has been reviewed by the city, it's been reviewed by the Johnson County MPO. And at this point in time, there's no further comments on that. And we believe that the improvements that we're proposing here will allow those intersections to operate properly once this development is fully built. You can see here on the plan on Forever Green and Scanlon Farms Road, we're planning on doing more than just the standard roads. We've got a lot of extra right-of-way there built in with some street trees, specifically along Scanlon Farm. You can see a double row of trees kind of on the southeast side of the road. We're planning on a trail to run through there with no utilities, just to try and provide a little bit more of a pedestrian-friendly route in and out of the development. There'll also be a sidewalk along Forever Green that folks will be able to access through here. So good pedestrian connections that allows people to get all around the development, from the school to the parks to the south with this plan. All in all, I think that's kind of the summary I have for tonight. Certainly happy to answer any questions anybody may have from the applicant's perspective.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this one?
My name is Pete Nowell. I live on Stony Point Lane. I think it would be accurate to say that everyone that is in this region that will be affected by this looks at this development in a negative light. I think the density is not consistent with what is in the surrounding neighborhoods. I think that the lots are small, and when you take out the green space, the average of the density, that it's going to be much more dense than what is consistent with around there. And I would call on Coroville City Council to be good steward of the neighborhoods around there and develop. I do have concerns, and I think of the one concern I have is this use of old traffic data. We've had a high school that's been grown at such an exponential rate that they built the addition ahead of schedule. North of the high school, there are developments that have already begun, and to the west of the high school, there are developments that have already been done. And I question the use of old traffic data, considering that the permanent study or a permanent development that you're proposing to use essentially irrelevant data because we haven't had the high school or those developments included, and then it's been done so far. And I'm concerned we're putting the cart in front of the horse, the horse in front of the cart is not devout, not doing this responsibly and figuring out whether this is truly going to affect the neighborhoods like we think it is, rather than what the developers hope. And I'd like a comment on why we haven't concerned, considered redoing this instead of using COVID as an excuse for not doing it.
I can speak on the side of the traffic. With this year being as it is, most of the traffic engineers in the state and the DOT have taken the approach that using traffic data from this year is probably not the best way to analyze what the actual traffic is going to be, because we just didn't know specifically at any time this year of what that actual impact's going to be on on the traffic flows down the road. They're starting to compile a little bit of data to be able to start doing that. But even now, most traffic engineers in the state are not comfortable that we have a good understanding of what the actual reduction in traffic is. And that's why grabbing new traffic counts in this year would have probably provided less traffic impact, less impact around the development, and less infrastructure needs for those intersections. By going with data that is not from this the summer, but from a time when traffic was more normalized, we have enough historical data that we can project reasonably what that will do as things increase. And the MPO's model oftentimes does plan on high schools that are planned on down the road. And depending on how that model exactly is, and I apologize, I don't have that specific answer tonight, but they do factor that in and a lot of how their models are set up. Even in our study, we also planned on the school district developing some sort of school here just north of the development. It's shown in purple on the drawing here as part of this model. So anyway, I think we're at a time of what is the most accurate way and what's the most responsible way to predict these things? And I think what we have done is, is accurate. And again, this has been reviewed by the Johnson County MPO, and they agree with our methodology as an appropriate measure at this point in time.
My name is Shelley Mott, and I'm also a homeowner in Stony Point. And I see on here there's a South Park Water Tower site, and it says potential water tower. Could you please explain why it says potential water tower? And what would be the determinant on why a water tower would be placed there? And how the water is going to be brought into this mega complex?
I can't speak to the specifics of the water tower. That was a request by the city to designate an area for where a water tower could be going. But I do know that there is a water line extended to the south end of this development that we are planning on connecting to. So this entire development will be serviced by city water, will not be operating off of wells in this area.
Yeah, this is Scott Larson. I'm the assistant city engineer. And I'll just add that the the water tower will likely be needed some point in the future as this development builds out. And so we, I think Caleb mentioned, we do have an 18-inch water main that we extended north from near Auburn Hills Drive a few years ago. So that was the first phase. We don't anticipate needing a water tower in the immediate future. It's really just to reserve or preserve that site for the expected need for a water tower down the road. Ultimately, we want to see Forever Green extended east from 12th Avenue and Forever Green Road over by North Central Junior High School. And with that road extension, would also come another water main to provide secondary access for water to this area.
Dan Podasky, Squire Point, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello?
Can hear you. Yep, we can hear you.
Yep, go ahead, Stan.
And we can hear you if you could provide your address, your full address.
Squire Point. So the answer, the question hasn't been totally answered. That water tower is to do what? You may build it with, if you have the needs, does that mean there's going to be a well there?
No, it'd be a water tower that's filled basically by the system pressure. And if that system pressure cannot fill the water tower, it'd be filled with a booster station nearby. It's really just meant to provide water to this specific area. The elevation of this development compared to the rest of our water main system that's north of Interstate 80 is, this area is high enough that we'd be looking at pressures that are not quite adequate once the development is fully built out. Plus, we also have to look at, I believe the city of Coroville and North Liberty, or maybe the school district have an agreement for a cross-connection to provide secondary fire flow to Liberty High School. And ultimately, that will benefit the proposed school site that you see there in the exhibit.
But no water, well, I mean, excuse me, no drilling for a well?
That's not in the plan at the moment, no. We have a number of wells around the city. And I can't say that there's any plans for a well out in this location.
Because obviously, you know that would affect all of us around this area.
We'll take your question. We can follow up with you after the meeting, possibly tomorrow.
Okay.
My name is Jana Wessels, and I live at 3831 Cedar Drive Northeast. And that is also referred to as Squire Point. So we're right across from the development. And I agree with the first speaker that for all of us, this is viewed as very negative. Not the development, it's fine to develop that area, it's unrealistic to think it wouldn't be developed, but the density. And the, you know, it's referred to as low-density because there are spaces set aside. But when you look at the size of the lot, the frontage of 50 feet, which is extremely narrow, extremely small, the fact that you're putting a 1,000, over 1,000 dwellings in that space, which families, you know, that's 4,000 people minimally, think about the cars. And it's just out of character with the entire area. There is no develop. This is plunked in the middle of surrounding areas from Coroville, North Liberty. That there's nothing like this. There's no need for this level of density. There's just, it's just out of character with the area. It's out of character with being a good neighbor. And again, we, we know this is going to be developed, and we look forward really to a good development. The school's been an improvement. We know this will be a desirable place to live. There's no need for this, this level of density. And it's, it's, I just really miss, you know, plead with you to stop, think, reconsider, and make it a livable area for all. Thanks.
I'd like to follow up with Jada and ask, I was told a typical, this is Stan Podasky. I was told a typical in-town size, one-family dwelling lot is 70 to 80 feet wide. Maybe somebody can verify that? If that is true, is there a lot in this development that is 70 to 80 feet wide?
Stan, I believe that that was in a recent school conversation that you and I had. And you are correct, a lot of the R1 single-family lots require 80 feet of frontage, 80 feet of width, and approximately, you know, 78,000 square feet. Coroville does have a small lot, R1B zoning district that requires a minimum 50 feet frontage and a minimum of 5,000 square feet. And that is more in keeping with what is being proposed on a lot of these single-family interior lots. It's not that unusual to cluster or view compact development such as this if you're going to be preserving or providing, you know, common open space or shared open space. But with that said, I, you know, on top of my mind, there are a few lots. I couldn't tell you exactly at this time which ones would meet the R1 standard versus which one would meet the R1B standards. I can only say at this time that there are lots that do meet the 80-foot requirement and square footage requirements. However, it's a bit of a mix, and you know, perhaps Caleb might be able to address that for you further.
But so you're telling, what we're looking at is a 208-acre development? And we don't know how many lots that meet a, whatever you call, R1 development? They must be very minor in number.
With all due
I don't know how, I don't know how you, I don't know how you can consider this to be low-density.
I mean, that's sort of, it seems like a cop-out to me to tell me that there are lots of 80-foot lots here when I'm looking at the map, and it's very clear that they are uniform in size.
Yeah, they're uniform, but they're all 50-foot.
Or these are all 50-foot lots.
Well, and for, you know, it's not, Mr. Nowell, it's not as clear-cut as that, you know, a lot of these lots require a minimum of 40 feet of frontage. If it's on a cul-de-sac, those can be met. There's a number of corner lots in this development where that is met. There's lots in the northeast portion of this where that is met. I just don't have a specific count for you. This is a residential planned unit development. Planning and developments are intended to allow flexibility in design. But in turn, we do require more amenities in terms of how that development is, is designed and how that looks. In this case, yes, the city understands that there are smaller, single-family lots, who may be typically seen. However, this development is also providing the community, which will be dedicated to the city, 22.77 acres of passive and active open space.
Yeah. Can you tell me, is there a minimum distance between houses that have to be met?
Six feet.
So if you take six feet on either side?
Correct.
So if you take six feet on either side, that's 12 foot. If you put up a double garage, that's 24 foot. So 24 and 12 is 36. So you have 14 foot for a house proper. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, what?
You have, you have six feet on either side of the lot, that's 12 foot. If you build a house with a two-stall garage, which I assume most people will, that's 24 foot. So 24 and 12 is 36. So you have 36, 50 minus 36, you have a 14-foot wide house to start with to the frontage?
Well, I think we need to take a look at the preliminary plat. I'm pulling up some of the lots for you to
What, do those, do those numbers make sense to you?
They, they do. What we need to
What kind of a house can you put behind that? I don't quite understand.
Well, 50 feet is, is not a
Not much.
Hey, Dave, I might be able to add.
Actually, you end up with approximately a 38-foot wide house with two six-foot setbacks on each side, which really isn't that
You end up with what, a 38?
Correct.
I think, but I said you, if you have a 24-foot garage in front of it, you got to have a garage someplace, right?
No, not necessarily. I mean, that, we're not at that point in the review process with this project. We're building, actual building designs have been submitted. What we're, what we're reviewing today is a preliminary plat as well as a site plan for this development. As many people have noted, the question isn't whether or not this property will be developed. It was, it was actually zoned, R-P-U-D-1 for residential development in 2016. What we're looking at is things that we've been discussing that can involve density, that can involve traffic and those sorts of issues. But Stan, to answer your question, you know, I'm just taking a look at some of these lots, they're 52 feet. Or even if you took a 50-foot wide lot and, you know, divided, you know, you had a six-foot side yard setback on each of these, you actually are dealing with 38 feet wide.
Okay, 38 feet wide. Now, now you have a two, two-stall garage, probably. That's 24 foot. That has to be in front. So 38 less 24, you have a house that is 12 foot to start with to the frontage. Do you not understand what I'm saying?
Now, Caleb, are you?
Yeah, I might be able to add a little bit. One of the things that when we planned this development is we had an interested buyer for a good portion of these lots. And what they wanted is a 40-foot minimum building width. So if you look here on the preliminary plat, you can see all the lots are laid out and they're 52-foot wide minimum. And so when you start talking about dimensions, you've got 40 foot of building width on each of these single-family lots that we could do. One of the reasons that this is being proposed this way is couple-fold. Number one, you know, we're surrounded this property by two pretty, pretty big streets, right? Pretty important, critical streets for this city, not to mention the planned extension of Forever Green through the middle of the development. When you look at zoning code, how Corvill has it set up, the R1 zoning is said to be kind of spread and pushed away from those kind of more major roads. Against those roads, they like to probably see more density, which that's pretty typical in standard land use planning. What we've done is, is realized when you start having the road, the whole property surrounded by that and having the road cut through the middle, this, this really does feel more like a development that should be planned more in the R1B kind of typical zoning. Not that that's what we're proposing, but that was kind of the model, what we tried to do, just so that we're not proposing anything different.
Can you clarify what R1B means?
R1B allows for a 50-foot minimum lot width and the setbacks that Dave had mentioned previously. And that's pretty consistent to, the setback wise, it's pretty consistent with what the R1 has as well. The thing about this development is we're trying to come in with some, some cost-effective housing here that can allow people to buy in Coroville that want to buy in here. The developer, the, the housing builder is going to be in here, I mean, the, the price ranges for this development, we're looking at, you know, 200,000 to 350 and plus, depending on how people finish out the houses. So I think we're going to see a nice range of prices, but prices that are going to help, you know, provide a nice, nice development in this area. From a density perspective, again, I know it doesn't sound like low-density, but the way the comprehensive plan is set up in Coroville, up to six units per acre is considered low-density. This parcel itself already has high-density and medium-density in it as well, which would ultimately press that overall density up and above at 4.8 units per acre. While 1,000 units sounds like a lot, we're talking about 200 acres of ground. It's actually well underneath what, what the documents we have to rely on as we bring a development forward tell us that we should be planning on a development. And that's why we're here where we're at. And I understand that people don't want to see the ground develop, and if they do want to see it developed, they want to see it done similarly. But the reality is, is this ground was planned for this kind of density, even more density. We are just trying to do something here that is going to be successful, is going to be a nice amenity. You know, as we laid out the single-family lots all the way along Dubuque Street, you'll notice out there right now, I think we've all seen those trees that line along there. All those lots that back up to Dubuque Street are at least 160 foot in depth. The reason they're so deep for compared to the other lots in here is because we're trying to maintain that buffer. We understand that you have great investments on that side, and we're trying to keep it looking nice, trying to be good neighbors here with the plans we've got. So that's why we've done it. You know, the, it's, it's not always easy coming in with a piece like this that starts to become that transition between what is estate, you know, county lots into city lots. And that's, that's really what this development does, is start that transition. One of the questions was, this doesn't meet the character of the neighborhood. And I would agree to the, to the east and south, yeah, it is a different character. But as you just go up the road a little bit north into North Liberty, it's very consistent to what's being built up there. So I think this is just that transitional piece that needs to start happening because ultimately, you know, building a bunch of estate lots out here is probably not going to be what happens down the road. And that transition has to start occurring. This piece seems like the right one, given all the constraints we have to deal with.
Stan, let me, Stan, let me, Stan, this is Shelley. Stan, let me explain something real quick, because what they're explaining to you is that these are all pre-sold to somebody. And when he says they're $200,000 houses, there's about three options that people are going to be able to come in and build. And they're all pretty standard cookie cutter houses. And that's why the lot sizes are what they are. They're going to put the same house on every single lot. So that's why the lot sizes are the size that they are.
I, I probably would concur with that. I would ask another question for the Corvill people. Have you developed anything like this of this magnitude with this many 50-foot lots? Hello? Hello? Hello?
Yes, um, Scott, maybe you could, you you can draw on more context than than I can.
I was just gonna add, I was just looking over the aerial photo of uh Corville here. And I would say uh all at once, once the metal coming in for for two hundred and twenty-six acres or two hundred acres or or so.
Not not necessarily, not necessarily that size, but in 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 afterwards even developed. Do you have this kind of density of those kinds of lots in one area?
Well, you'd have to look probably in the uh along the Holiday Road area west of Twelfth Avenue in Corville. Um, there are some R one B lots mixed in with um smaller R one lots, um, some duplexes, um, even some apartment buildings in that area. And that would have been an area of Corville that developed back uh primarily in the nineteen seventies through the early nineties.
And that's where we're stooping to now in the two thousand twenties, back to the nineteen seventies. I have another question. Along Dubuque Street, when you talk about low density, what is this thing that is at the corner of Dubuque and Scanlon Road? That brown multifamily complex, it looks huge.
Apartment building.
Yeah, I think it's uh, I think it's a very large apartment building, Stan.
You know, I just like to reiterate that I don't, I think that the statement was made by Caleb that no one wants this developed. And while I would not like it to be developed because I love seeing the cornfields, I understand that's an inevitability. And I don't think anybody doesn't want this developed and and things that won't happen. But this is inconsistent with everything that's going on in this neighborhood around here. And to add in this kind of density and to act like this is going to be good for the neighborhood or good for the community when there's nothing that's been done like this, basically what we just found out for fifty years. But I feel like we've done a really poor job of of staying away from mistakes that have been made in the past and being a good steward to the community because this is not consistent with what any other neighborhood is like around here. And it's not that we don't want to develop, but this is not the right pro, not the like right way to do it.
And to call it a transition, I mean, there a transition is fine, and I don't have an estate property, so I'm not looking for estate property. But looking for Auburn Hills, looking for consistent with, you know, the area, um, this this is just not. I mean, there's transition is is not what this is.
No.
Hi, my name is, my name is uh, I'm sorry, my name is Doug Stefan, and uh I'm with um the Stony Point Homeowners Association. I live at thirty-eight oh nine. Um, and um, Peter, I'm glad that you actually brought that up because I I was going to comment on that same topic. First off, I want to I want to thank the broad group, um, and especially thank the the committee for taking the time to listen to our concerns and our feelings uh pertaining to this proposed project. Uh, there was a comment earlier made about we have a large investment or a significant investment across the street. You know, it's not about how big somebody's house is. I think to Peter's point and obviously Nancy's point, uh, it it's it's about consistency, and there's a reason that we moved out here and bought land and invested and and paid taxes. I want to compliment the team that also put the extraordinary work into creating this design and layout of this project because I can only imagine how much work it was to go through it and to get to this point. But there's one problem, and and that's this this design just does not belong here. And you put this in perspective, we're talking about dropping in a a town or a very small city, whatever you want to call it, right across the street from where we live. We all purchased our homes and land to be out of the busy sector. And uh, and I think that there is probably people on this phone, excuse me, on this call, that probably if they were living in these same areas as us, you might feel the same way. So let me just throw it out there. If I could ask you honestly for a response, how many of you, if you lived adjacent to this proposed project or right across the street, like many of us do, would you have concerns about safety or traffic flow? I mean, we're talking about Forever Green passing through, and we all know where Forever Green starts and where it ends. And there's going to be a lot more cars than we can probably even project today that's going to be taking that pathway. There's emergency response preparedness. You have a again additional traffic. We have all kinds of driveways that that low and lower Dubu- Dubuque Street that actually access Dubuque Street. What's it? Think about how much how much how busy it's going to be for those families and young drivers that are going to be pulling out into that street. But would you support this project if you lived right across the street from this? Truly, would you? Because I have a feeling that if you did, or if you were adjacent to this project, like many of us that are expressing our concerns, perhaps you would be coming with the same questions and pushbacks that we have. We're not suggesting that this shouldn't be developed because I love the farmland, and and I think it's probably some of the finest farmland in Johnson County. But at the same time, we know it's going to be developed, but I think that this is an irresponsible way and solution to creating housing for people uh that's inconsistent with what's out here today.
Sir, would you like to speak? Don, is it sure?
If I speak, is Don is Don's gonna speak? Well, my name is.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Yeah, my name is Nancy Goken. Um, I live, let's see, is this Dubuque Street? I live right, whoops, yes, well, the picture went away. I live, uh, I'm a a invested property owner. I live directly across Dubuque Street from this property. And um a couple of comments, you're talking about traffic. Uh, Dubuque Street is called by a lot of the older residents, old two eighteen. And in fact, it used to be Highway two eighteen. It was a designated US highway. But uh, when, yeah, right, yeah, let's see, this is the roundabout. We live right about here or here. Any rate, uh, so we we face this property. But Dubuque Street used is called by a lot of the locals, Old Highway two eighteen, and it used to be a designated US Highway two eighteen. But um, the uh DOT uh took away the designation, the US Highway designation, because it deemed it to be unsafe to bear that much traffic because of the buildup of property, properties to the south of us uh a long time ago, actually, when the Knowles were built. And they they deemed it, um, because there were so many driveways that accessed what is now called Dubuque Street, uh, that a a two lane, uh, non-divided highway uh was unsafe to have a highway designation. So it is now Dubuque Street. So I would think you should keep that in mind that uh the Highway Commission uh downgraded that road because it was unsafe. Also, um Corville, I thought, had a document that described what its relationship was going to be with its neighboring communities uh when it developed uh an expansion of its borders. Now, I don't want to make a big deal of it, but we know how Corville annexed this property. In fact, it it created a narrow corridor from uh where it's the main body of Corville is. And let's see, it came up with a near huh? It came up with a narrow corridor like this from the south. I don't remember how wide it is, but it's not very wide. And uh, the the law is that you can't you can't annex anything that's not physically adjacent. So it it came up with a narrow corridor and that allowed it to annex this property. But a quarter, uh, Corville in the past has had a policy, a good neighbor policy, that said that um it would, in fact, uh, be compliant with the characteristic of neighborhoods uh that it um created new developments in or adjacent to. Uh, and that was a written policy that existed, and I have it here somewhere. I have a huge pile of papers. Now, this in no way meets that or is it within that description. This is not within the characteristic of a good neighbor policy. This is, you're not being a good neighbor, Corville. You're being a terrible neighbor, frankly. This does not resemble in any fashion the surrounding properties. I mean, I know that you think that because we're complaining, it's just because many of us have large properties and we're wealthy, but that's not true. I mean, some of us are, but many of us aren't. You know, the the properties down here are small, middle-class properties. Several of them over here are, you probably, some of you know, well, the property that's here. This guy, by the way, I mean, you've read the traffic study. This person here has to replace his cyclone fence twice a year because it gets knocked down by people who don't make the curve. Uh, and that's not in the traffic study because it's not a reportable accident. So the the perception that it's wealthy people against non-wealthy people is absolutely wrong. It's people who have moved out here because they want to live in an area that is not crowded. They want to enjoy the pleasures of a rural area. And by like my colleague said, but you've put a mini city, you've parked it right in the middle of where we live. This is not being a good neighbor. This is in contradistinction to the policy you have put in writing, in fact. I have a third unrelated question, and that is, how are you going to control runoff during your gr- grading period when you are going to be doing your construction here? And how are you going to document your control of runoff? Because that's going to be, there are all these people down here have wells across Rustic Ridge Road. And um, how are you going to protect their wells during your grading period? And how are you going to document that you are controlling the runoff and protecting their wells? And I'll stop talking there. These are addressed to the developers. That particular question is addressed to the developers.
Well, I'm Kevin Olson. I'm the city attorney. I'm going to address some of your questions here. Number one, the ann- the annexation you talked about, that was the first version. This version goes across, takes in the Kirkoff property, takes in the Tiggas property, does not go down.
Okay, where's that? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, where is that?
Across the street from where Forever Green, where the old Pratt farm was, the Kirkoffs have a big and then goes into the Tiggas property, does not go down North Liberty Road. Um, second of all.
They've given that part, they've given that part up?
We'd not, that that annexation that just went all the way down North Liberty Road is not, was not part of the annexation that was approved.
What do you mean?
Well, you said we took a small strip. It is not a small strip. We took, we went across the road and took in, took in a bunch more acres here. You're thinking of the first of annexations. I wanted to make sure.
But that's how you annex this property originally. That is a true statement.
We didn't, that is not how it was approved.
Yes, it was.
No, okay, you can argue with me, but that's not the boundary. So, second of all, we have, we are under the requirements of the US EPA for stormwater protection because we are in a city. So we are required to document, the developer is required to keep all the sediment runoff on his lot, and we are required to develop. They're required to uh submit uh, we in fact, and they submit the development plan. So there will not be things running off into cross streets into other people's properties. So that is something the county is not, is not subject to those problems.
Well, no, wait, wait. So this is the responsibility of the developer. So you're saying that this has nothing to do with the county. This has to do with the city. It's it's Corville City, right? So but you're saying Corville has no responsibility.
I'm saying the Corville has, Corville is required by the United States equal uh EPA to monitor runoff. I'm saying the county, when you build in the county, you're not required to do that because they're not under that permit. We actually in Corville have stricter stormwater standards than there are in the unincorporated area of Johnson County.
I'm asking you, what kind of documentation will there be?
There are inspections that are done all the time that the EPA can see. So we are required, the developer is required to submit inspections after certain rain events and every and quarterly, and the city is required to inspect those also.
Well, can you be more specific? I would like to know exactly what kind of documentation there will be and how frequently this will be monitored. I mean, if I live down here, I would be very concerned about my will. Let's say you only did it once in six months. That would be totally inadequate. And if I live down here.
But that's not the federal law. You're not listening. The federal law requires us to do this, okay? That's why the stormwater will be handled. It's not going to go across the street. It's we it cannot be allowed to happen.
I think I think we should concentrate on keeping this cordial because I know Nancy is absolutely listening. Um, and I think it's okay for people to talk freely, but I I think it's important for concerns to be expressed, but also most importantly heard, Kevin.
Uh, this is Scott Larson, Engineering Department. Real quick, let me just, let me just say that I'm happy to provide the whole process that we have to follow um when it comes to stormwater and erosion control. Um, it's all laid out, and I'd be happy to share that with the contact list that's uh.
That's exactly what I would like to see because I will tell you, the last time we went through this process, Corville said that they personally, I mean, not personally, the city of Corville was acting as the agent of the EPA. And what they said is they would monitor the runoff from the project after every one quarter inch rain event. And there were no records of that. There were, so do you are, do you think I'm being unreasonable to ask what kind of records there will be and how frequently will this be monitored? Because that was in the city documents of Corville.
I'll share the process with everybody after the meeting.
Thank you.
If I could ask, I know that there's been um, there's been a lot of concerns expressed. And um, and I think there's, uh, we've talked a little bit about traffic studies and and things. And um, you know, perhaps I think there's part of us that could agree that it might be a better idea to have this post-COVID uh so we can get a full idea of what that traffic really does mean for this area. You know, knowing that this meeting, the hearing was actually um coming together. I I know I live within a couple of hundred feet of uh of Dubuque Street, but I was, I was not notified. I heard it through somebody else. And and I think that there's been a very short period of time here for us to even to assemble and and put together some of our thoughts because of the holidays and everything else that's been going on. As we step back from this, one thing that I would love to ask, uh, and hopefully at least keep this in consideration, we are very, very concerned, as you can tell, by this small city being dropped in right in amongst all of us. We are not against um this being developed. It's just developed responsibly with something consistent with this area. Can we ask, please, for a delay in this? So to allow us time uh to express our concerns uh more clearly, uh, perhaps to have some of these things done or or questions answered a little bit uh more concisely than uh than what has been uh communicated on this call.
So just so everybody's aware, we are just an advisory to the council. So this, so this would either get approved or denied tonight, and then it's got to go to the council. And I believe it's two readings um that it goes to the council before it gets approved. So you'll have an opportunity, not only tonight, but you'll have two additional ones uh to come forward before anything can happen.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
And I would just, I would just say to follow up to what you just said, Doug, because you just said a small city. I would just throw out a number to the last census. The city of Solon, I think we're all pretty familiar. I just looked up on the census, their last census, eight hundred and thirty-two housing units in their town. Eight hundred and thirty-two in the town of Solon. This is a thousand units on this small area. It's going to go in across the street from us.
Yeah.
The town of Solon has eight hundred and thirty-two. I know many of you on this call live on acreages or live on areas. Would you want the town of Solon across the street from you on two hundred acres? Town of Solon is bigger than two hundred acres, and it has eight hundred and thirty-two units. This is going to have a thousand units.
The other thing that was also fair to express, and I know somebody brought it up earlier, and that is creating an opportunity for people to have access to homes at different price ranges. You know what? I'm not a Realtor, but I have many friends that are. And I'm telling you right now, there are many homes that people have access to.
This, if I may say so, the, there's a big problem with this area in that there is no public transportation in this area. So unless you have an automobile, you can't get anywhere that there's a grocery store, a physician, or any other service. Because no public transportation services this area, either on Dubuque Street or North Liberty. The closest grocery store is at least two to three miles away. So, you know, if you're concerned about housing in all price ranges, this is not the location that you want to put it.
Can we see what these proposed, these, these units look like? Since we obviously, since they're already pre-sold and they know what they're going to, I mean, they know what they're going to look like.
Pre-sold?
Yeah, they're pre-sold, so we should be able to see what they look like.
How can they be pre-sold when the plat isn't approved?
Well, they've already pre-sold them all. They know what they're going to look like.
How can that be?
So tonight, we're only looking at these, this particular thing, we're looking at the site plan and the preliminary plat, right? As Dave said earlier, as this thing progresses, that's when more and more of this information comes out. So tonight, we're looking at the site plan and the preliminary plat on this.
What do you mean, information comes out?
To, in order to develop a site, you have to, go ahead, Dave.
To, to explain this, what, what's, what the applicant is going to need to do is if this concept is approved by city council, then this project isn't over at that point. The applicant will need to come in and request a additional site plan, a PUDB site plan. At which point, that is where we get a lot more of the more refined details if the project makes it that far. And that is the point when we will again notify all property owners within two hundred feet of the affected property, publish this in a newspaper and go through a very similar experience. And it would be at that time where we would have more specific building design information, material information, footprint information. But that's only going to happen if this project moves forward that far. Doug, if I could follow up on a comment you made earlier, I can, I can promise you, we mailed out notification to all property owners within two hundred feet of this property. It was a total of twenty-nine property owners. You might be surprised that that doesn't actually go, it didn't actually include all of Stony Point Lane. A lot of those properties on the east were not there. The Stony Point Homers Association was also notified of this request. And I would only add to that, I would note Paul is correct. The commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, hearing this tonight, is advisory to city council. They would only make recommendations. The developer does have the opportunity to request the item be tabled. Otherwise, they can also request that this be voted on.
I want to go back to the question of pre-sold housing. How can that be done if?
I don't know whether, or I have no knowledge of sales. I, that is not, that is not anything the city is knowledgeable of.
Can the developer speak to that?
Hi, Caleb Smith here again. I can't speak to all the terms of any deals. I just know that they have an interested buyer right now.
In what, in a unit, in forty units?
I don't know the volume of units. I haven't been involved. I just know that the reason that the lot sizing is set as it is, a little bit bigger than fifty foot on those single families is just to try and accommodate the, the, the building products they want to do. And they've got a variety of stuff that they have in their inventory.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said at all.
I can't speak to how many units have been spoken for. I know they haven't sold because nothing's there, but I know that they have an interested buyer.
Like the cart before the horse to me, if I could say that.
Guide us back in. We're looking right now at the site plan and the preliminary plat is what we have in front of us. We, we as the, the commission have no idea what happens outside of that. We're here to look at the site plan and the preliminary plat.
Okay, one of my last concerns, if I can please, and I know that there's probably others that have maybe some other closing thoughts on this. Will the reclassification, if I can call it that, and you have to excuse my ignorance here, of this land trigger additional public investment? You know, so for instance, as we look at, you know, Forever Green, we look at increased traffic. We look at things happening that we maybe don't plan for. I mean, I just can't help but think that this volume of homes, this volume of traffic at some point isn't going to have some negative ramifications as it relates to additional public investment, which.
This is a city, this is not a subdivision. Let's call it what it is.
Hang on, let him finish, please.
All right.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm, I'm also concerned about that. And that isn't just for me. That's for a lot of people that are good, that could be impacted by that. So I think that's just another reason for us to kind of slow down and take this all in and, and and be cognizant of the magnitude in which how many homes are actually, we're looking at for this relatively small piece of land. Thank you.
Sir, could, could somebody clarify for me? I thought this was all owned by the Scanlon heirs. Is there a, a different party involved in this now? Is that, is that public knowledge?
According to the application we saw, it was the two people I believe own this property. Two or three, I can't remember off the top of my head.
And are they of the Scanlon family?
I don't recall the last name, honestly.
The Scanlon family still owns the whole piece, but they're going to sell most of it off.
Okay, and so the applicant is not the Scanlon family, it's this other party.
And that would be the one who's going to develop the rest, the project you're looking at right now.
That, that was a question, sir. I don't know if that was true or not. Is the applicant the Scanlon party or are they the supposedly new owner?
The Scanlon family and the developer are both applicants here.
Is there any way that we can get information about what the density of this housing is taking away of these green spaces? Because one of the green spaces is going to be, it sounds like a slam dunk that it's going to be a water tower. Really an unusable land as the topography is. It's not really a good park area where it's flat and it can have kids play. That much green space. So when you take away or use the functional green space to, to start making those lots seem bigger than they are, the average density being lower than it is. What's the density look like when you take that away? Because that, I think, is, is sort of making this appear as if it's less dense than it is. When in reality, some of that green space is obligated to be green space just because it's not, the topography is not such that it's a good park area. You can't build on it, you can't play on it.
I think it's a water sink, isn't it? It's a wet lens to allow them to drain.
Given that, given that, again, speaking of the fact that, not that we don't want this developed, but we don't want to over densely develop it. Can anybody talk to me or give me some numbers of what the, what that density would be when you take away that non-functional green space?
Are you talking about the number of units?
Yeah.
Of housing units?
Do you have that information? Because it feels to me like this is even more dense than you're proposing because of the high-density housing.
Well, there's two hundred and eight acres total. So that's the total number, what?
But, but there's a great deal of green space on the south end that is not, not developed and is for a water tower. And they're including that as part of the project to decrease the overall density. And so I think one of our biggest complaints is a concern of the density. And this makes it seem like it's even less dense when you include that space.
Well.
Can, do you have any information about that, Caleb?
All I can speak to is when you plan on a PUD, oftentimes, as, as Dave spoke earlier, that you have to provide some extra amenities that you would do above and beyond a normal development. If you look at this property in the comprehensive land use plan, it allows for significantly more units than we've got.
Twenty-three acres.
Yep, and we, we provided that level of open space to try and provide that extra amenity that the city would expect to see in a PUD plan development. And so that does count into the overall density because that could just be factored into overall lots. And given the extra density that the land use plan that was approved last August would allow, we are significantly under that density. And that is why we feel like we have a plan that is well underneath the restrictions that we have on the property.
And I appreciate what you're saying with that, Caleb. But again, the, the land to the south does not appear to me to be developable because of the topography of it and the drainage of it and the way that Forever Green Road is now or Rustic Ridge. So that land, you're giving that, you're, you're giving your company credit for making green space when in matter of fact, it's just not rational to develop that, nor is it really usable as green space.
It's twenty-one.
Will you be, will you be?
The, the city from the beginning has said they were very interested in maintaining that area as a city park. If you look into the PUD documents, we even have a concept trail plan that can be used as more of a naturalized park space. And that's really the biggest reason that area has been preserved the way it has, is those conversations with city staff over the past year.
And Mr. Now, if, if, if I, if my math is correct, if we were to move the twenty-two acres of open space in this development, keep the same number of units, the same, we'd be at approximately five point three acres. Or I'm sorry, five point three eight, an average of five point three eight dwelling units per acre.
And, and again, I just think that that is irresponsible in, in the way that it was conceived with what's going on in the neighborhoods around that. This is equivalent of putting Mount Vernon on this land. Are there going to be new police, police stations? Are there going to be new fire trucks? Are these people within, you know, is the traffic set up for it? We don't have any of that information because we're not redoing those tests and it seems rushed.
Well, and I can, I can speak to some of that at least. Throughout, through the development review process with the city of Coralville, we have a development review team that includes all city stakeholders that are involved in reviewing infrastructure, police, fire, access, all of that sort of things. Our fire chief is involved in that, as is our police chief. Neither whom, neither, neither of them indicated that there'd be a need for any additional facilities or vehicles as a result of this development.
Where is the closest fire station?
You're asking about a Coralville fire station, correct, Nancy?
Well, it's Coralville, yeah.
Either going to be Oakdale or Holiday Road, or it's going to be the downtown.
So do we have any idea of what response times would be? Similarly, police?
I do not know. To answer your question, no, I do not know what the response time or impact on response times would be as a result of this.
So there really are good reasons to postpone this decision, I think. Because there, there is a certain lack of, you know, data here.
Kevin and Dave, has anybody, has an applicant submitted something that is more in line with what we have out here in the area in which we live? What I mean more specifically, you know, something that I guess is better suited in the sense of the infrastructure that's in place, the, the housing developments that are around. I mean, something that has, I, I don't, I don't know the magic number, three hundred houses. I mean, it just seems to me that all that I'm hearing is it's a thousand plus. It's like from Solon across the street from us. But is, is there another applicant that's giving you an idea, hey, maybe we could, maybe we could do this and, and, and create an environment that's consistent with what's out here in this neck of the woods?
I guess I can answer that, Doug, quick. We had a proposal from Mr. Watts when we redid this zoning out here in two thousand and sixteen. And Scott, maybe you can correct me. I know Dave wasn't here. Was it eight hundred and fifty units, something like that?
Yeah, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Yeah, well.
But I have not, I have not seen anything that was, you know, two, three hundred units on, on this parcel.
And maybe that's, maybe that's not enough. I don't, I don't know what the magic number is. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, this, this just seems to be extreme. And, you know, even eight hundred and fifty sounds extreme to me. She'll just throw out a number there that's the size of Solon, size of Solon in this small spot. It just seems to me when you look at this, you know, is four or five hundred more appropriate? Why are we jumping through hoops? Not, not we, and please, I'm not trying to direct this at any committee president or anybody. But why are we, why is it so important that, that we consider this applicant so seriously? When it, it just, we, we just, there's just nothing but a negative vibe about this whole project on behalf of the, the residents.
God, I think the answer is it's they're getting the most dollars out of this property that they can possibly do. And it also is a Coralville itself. This is far enough away from Coralville proper that they don't really care. I'm sorry, guys from Coralville, but your, your administration doesn't really care about this property out here because it's going to provide a great tax base for you people. That's what it's all about, it's dollars.
I would, first of all, we want to grow our community, you are correct. But the residential, residential in, in the long run over twenty or thirty years does not pay for itself by the time you have put all the improvements and everything in. So raising tax base was not, is not the main purpose for this development. So I would, I would disagree with you on that, sir.
Look at the area around it and look at how you're being responsible about growing this. The area to the east, to the south, to the southeast. This is not anything like that around the area of that. And so you're not being responsible in doing it in any way, shape or form, like the area around it. You're plunking a city in the middle of it.
Kevin, if I may ask, what, what is your sense of what the benefit of this is?
Well, we are, this, we are, I mean, this has been annexed, crack my arm, two thousand and eight, two thousand and six, something like that. We're just trying to, we're just trying to grow out here, you know, grow in this area. All the area out here that's around there is, is going to grow. And, and Forever Green Road will come through someday. It could be fifteen, twenty years from now because that all depends on when North Liberty does it to get it to. Because we used to own their old Pratt property that, and so the Forever Green Road come through there. And one of the things the council is looking at is trying to provide different, different types of housing for people to, to, to look at here. So, and then there's also going to be a school site out here. So, you know, that's kind of another, another reason to have a residential development out in that area.
And I, and I think, when I look at the other neighborhoods, when you look at the high-density housing, it's what you see more towards three eighty. It's what you see more towards areas where there's closer resources for people to have to move around.
That's right.
That's a concern is that this just doesn't seem like what's in line with it. And so it's, is there a reason that we have to do this or can we not? I mean, this is an incredible business opportunity for whoever, whoever gets this. Is there some reason why we can't try to advocate for better ideas or different ideas from different builders rather than take it because it's been sitting dead for a while? And what are your thoughts on that? Because it seems like it's been, we've been waiting for a while. I see where you're coming from, but it seems like now we're sort of rushing a little bit.
Mm-hmm. But we did already approve, in two thousand and sixteen, we already approved the eight hundred and fifty acre, eight hundred and fifty units on this, if I remember correctly. So.
Well, not exactly.
Then we're taking stuff backwards by offering two hundred more spots.
Although that was, that was quite controversial, the approval. And.
It wasn't finally approved.
Same families involved.
Yeah. It wasn't finally approved, I don't believe. It didn't reach final approval.
It was.
Was it?
It was.
Obviously, it failed, decided not to go forward. It's just that, that is prime development property. So if revenue is the issue, there are many opportunities, many. Just slow it down, take a step back.
I think about that area around Wickham and you get into the forest edge area. And I mean, you know, you think, you look at this beautiful farmland, and I know it's wide open and it's flat. But I mean, if, if you have an area that allows for, or a plan that allows for fewer homes with more landscaping, planting trees, it, you're going to take that area and it's just going to look so much better as opposed to just rowing up some houses.
I know.
It just seems to me that from the aesthetics, it just, it's, it, I just can't believe that that this would be the best solution long-term for this, for this area.
Why you're, why you would be losing money tax-based wise over the course of twenty years? I'm confused what you meant by that, Kevin.
Okay, so you get the tax money upfront, you are correct. But when you restart replacing all the roads and everything that are in. But when you restart replacing all the roads and everything that are inside those things, they're millions of dollars a block. So you are, we are getting tax money upfront, but 20, 30 years from now, when it's all after you replace, that's a problem.
Better off than not doing this, is what you're saying.
That's what I was going to say.
No, you, I, I was just refuting your, 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 your discussion that this was only being done to raise revenue. And I was, that is not the only reason for doing that. That's what, that's what my comment was based upon.
So then it would, my logic would be then you're better off putting larger lots that are going to do less harm infrastructure-wise to the roads and need less services and bring in larger tax revenue for, for example, one, $2 million houses that are going to have less drivers taking up road space. Seems like that would be a better use of your tax money.
Well, but you're still going to have the roads and everything to put in there. It's not like you're losing.
Not going to have a thousand or 1,500 people driving down the road that are going to be less road use.
But you're going to still going to have the road, same roads in there. I mean, you're not reducing the infrastructure by putting bigger lots in there.
Kevin, can you tell me?
It's not all this property, so they can't do anything with it. The city does not own this property, so the city can't not put anything in there.
Yes, the city does own, well, no, that's true.
I guess I don't really know who owns it.
If I could interject for a moment, Mr. Scher is here. He's been waiting patiently to be able to speak. Take the microphone, sir, and let me.
You better stand up and talk. There's actually a hole. There's a lot of people here.
Thanks again, committee, for being so patient and hearing us through this. And I know it's a process and there's a lot of work going into it, and we just really appreciate the time.
My name's Don Scher. Can you hear me up there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I live on Square Point Drive, and it must be 200 feet back farther than whatever the list is because I'd like to get a letter of invitation. Just because I live in the back of that division, I don't think makes me any less of a citizen of the county. My concern has always been for safety. I've lived there since 1993. And in the early days, I used to talk about Doc Rosinix parking lot. Because when people came around that curve at 50 miles an hour, it slid into his front yard, knocked down his fence. And for the next couple of days, we had a bunch of trucks out there moving those cars out of the way. Now we're talking about 1,000, not 800, like we talked about back in 216, but 1,000. And I don't know how many cars most of those people have, but I'd be guessing at least two and maybe three. The, the numbers of cars on Dubuque Street on our side of the road, on the east side, is going to just go through the roof. And there will be people killed because we right now have a sign out there that says 50 miles an hour. Come around that Dubuque Street to the south from the high school. Somebody has to change that at some point. My advice would be do it tomorrow morning, but they probably won't do that. To the gentleman who made the comment about how wide Dubuque Street is, I don't think you've been out there. Because it's not wide. There's barely room for two cars or a truck and a car on Dubuque Street. It's a, it's an old two-lane road, as Nancy told you. And I'd be very happy to wait on this project until you guys give some numbers. I don't think, you know, they're blaming the COVID for everything. And I blame it too because I had it and it's not any fun. But my recommendation to the commission or the board or whatever, I'm sorry, I don't know what you guys officially are, is make them show you a new, fresh road evaluation before you do anything. Because when you look at that first picture that he had up there, that plaque, I can't see how in the world I'm going to get out of my lane because it's a two-lane road. And I know down at the bottom, it looks like they've got a whirl, whirl around, whatever. I have some problems from the COVID. I apologize. I can't always get all my words out. But down at the bottom, at the southeast corner, they're going to put in a roundabout. And when, when that new road comes in, the traffic is going to be unbelievable. And that isn't the answer to the problem. The answer to the problem is to evaluate south of that project and determine how you are going to make that road accommodate the numbers of cars that it will accommodate with 1,000 new houses. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Does anybody else on the call wish to address or make a statement?
I have a question, and that you refer in a correspondence to using the 2018 traffic study. I was unable to find a 2018 traffic study. That was probably my carelessness, but I found a 2012 traffic study, an updated version, and then there was a 2015 Liberty, Liberty High School traffic study, but I couldn't find a 2018. Maybe someone would send me a copy. The website, the, the JCHO website doesn't seem to have any copies at all. You can't access them. So anyway, it's hard to figure things out if you can't get the, the data.
There is a June 28, 2018 traffic study that the NPO JC did for Johnson County Engineering Department. I can include that in the, in my list of things from.
That would be great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else that wishes to address the commission?
You know, why don't people get these things? Where, you know, they're hiding and blame you or something?
All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to consider the recommendation approval of the RPUD A site plan?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Wenman, seconded. Seconded by Taylor. Discussion.
Hey, Paul, this is Kevin. I wanted to say one thing. This is a one-reading resolution. There'll still be a public hearing at the 26th council, council meeting if it goes forward. So it's because the rezoning already happened. So I, I know you said too early. I wanted to make sure that everybody had the right information.
Some are two, some are one. Sorry about that.
Oh, no, I just wanted to make sure that everybody had the right information. So, but there will be a public hearing at the January 26th council meeting for this project, if you guys recommend denial or approval, either way.
So what was tonight's hearing for then? Everything that we've said, what was it for?
There's a hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there's a hearing at the city council. So it's two different hearings, one in front of the P and Z, one in front of the council.
So everything we've said tonight means what?
They, the, the planning and zoning commission can take into account everything that is said at this meeting. And to make their decision, they make a recommendation to the council to approve or deny. And the city council is the one who takes final action on this. And so the 26th year will also have an opportunity to discuss this further with the city council. And Mr. Larson's going to get some more information out for people. And I'm sure if you, if you want some more information, we got three weeks before then. So if you need any more information, we'll be happy to provide what you're asking for, if we can.
So basically, this was just not, this didn't have any utility then, is what you're saying. Like I said earlier, we're an advisory to the council. That's our, our charter, I guess.
Well, you have to make up your mind, though.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Based on it.
We can vote it, we can deny it, and it can be passed by council. We can approve it and can be denied by council. There's have happened. Thank you very much, Paul, and thanks for the, the entire commission. And I, I think I would leave you with this thought if we're to that point is, again, if you lived right on Dubuque Street where we are and are across from where this project is being proposed, would you want that dropped in right there, knowing that you moved out here because you kind of wanted to get away from that busy sector? So please keep, keep that in mind. Put yourself in our shoes, view it through our lens. And hopefully you can maybe share some of those same feelings that we share. Commission, do we have any further discussion on this?
It's a nice map. I'd like to have a copy of it.
Dave, anything to add or share?
No, I think I've had an opportunity to say everything. I need to. Thank you.
All right, we will now vote on the approval of the RPUD A site plan. This will be a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, was there a motion and a second?
Yes, it was moved by Wenman, seconded by Taylor.
Thank you. All right, Wilson.
Nay.
Taylor.
Nay.
Wen.
Nay.
Wenman.
Aye.
Fessler.
Nay.
And Aaron's.
Nay. Whoop, Mr. Knutson is on, Dave, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. And Knutson.
Aye.
I'm sorry, was that an aye or?
A bunch of nays.
Aye, aye, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So motion does not pass, five to two. Do I have a motion to consider the recommending approval of the preliminary plat?
They're moved.
Moved by Wilson, second.
Second.
Second by Fessler. Discussion.
Can we comment on how this vote is different than what we just voted for again?
So the first one was the site plan? And then now this one is the preliminary plat?
And the difference being what? I'm sorry.
Thanks, Dan.
The preliminary plat, I'm sorry, the preliminary plat is a separate document from the site plan. Site plan outlines much of the conceptual development, whereas a preliminary plat actually plots these specific lots and their dimension, their sizes. That's how the two differ.
Thank you.
But you vote, but you do vote on both of those.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes, they are, they are both voted on separately.
Look the same way.
Any further discussion on this one?
So we're basically just approved the streets and, and parks, and now we're voting on the lot sizes. Is that a fair assessment, Dave?
Yes, yes and no. The preliminary plat does identify and dedicate the streets, the open space. It goes into specifics about the lot sizes, configurations, dimensions, those sorts of things. Whereas the site plan is really a, a document which outlines the development and concept. That's where we get a lot of our specific density information from. So yes, yes and no, the infrastructure and the specific lot sizes and, and that planning process and that dedication process is actually handled through the preliminary plat, which is a reflection of the site plan.
Thank you.
We will now vote on the approval of the preliminary plat. We will do a roll call vote, please.
Knutson? Knutson?
Just the, sorry, nay, I was on you. Just the committee votes.
Wen?
Nay.
Taylor?
Nay.
Fessler?
Nay.
Wenman?
Yes.
Wilson? Wilson?
Sorry. Internet dropped, nay.
And Aaron's.
Nay. Motion does not pass, six to one. We will now move on to agenda item number seven, a public hearing request by Scanlon Family LLC to consider the approval of rezoning of property from RPUD 1 Residential Plans Unit to CPUD 1 Commercial Planed Unit Development and approve a PUDA site plan for the property referred to as Scanlon Farm South Ridge. I will now open the public hearing on this.
Yeah.
Anybody wish to address the commission on this one? This is a rezoning of a property from residential to commercial.
Exactly, where is it?
Do you have, do you have a map of that?
Yeah, well.
Is it, is that the, the south and then the north? I think there are a couple of different parts of this. Is that correct?
This is, if I could share my screen, hold on a moment, please.
I think we're in a similar situation here because that's the multifamily piece.
Yeah, yeah, this is a mixed-use proposal inside of the, it is a separate development under separate ownership. This is a mixed-use proposal inside of the previous, previously considered development. So bear with me, I try and share my screen.
Thank you. I, I would just like to, rather than, I think, repeat all the things that I suggested earlier shared my feelings earlier. I think I'm in the same, same position as I was earlier on, on this one. I believe that, I believe that this is going to be something that just does not fit into this particular area. And would ask that it not be considered. I really appreciate that. Anybody else wish to address the commission?
I would guess we all feel about the same way as we felt with the first one.
Yeah, it's to save everybody time on this one, and not to disrespect all the work that's gone into it because I'm sure there's a ton developing this, this project and this plat and laying it all out, what it would look like. But I, I just can't, I can't see that anybody around here would support this any differently, the, the project we spoke about earlier, Dave.
I didn't know there was one. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to look at it.
Dave, is it okay if I speak? Lauren Hoffman?
Please do.
Okay, I'm Lauren Hoffman, representing Scanlon Family LLC, pertaining to this particular commercial park property. I'm, I'm with Hall and Hall Engineers, 1860 Boyson Road, Hiawatha. I just did want to comment a little bit on type of building we're looking to put there and the type of use, you know, being sensitive to the surrounding area. We wanted to veer away from what you would see in a conventional C-store like setting where, you know, very cookie cutter and not really fit with the surrounding land use. With our proposal, we were looking at having a lower level mixed use. I did hear earlier that there were some concerns about being two and a half miles away from the nearest grocery store. And so the thought here is to have some of those amenities in a more of a neighborhood type setting with the upper stories being residential to kind of get, get that mixed use brought into here where you could take advantage of getting some residential properties above, above the commercial. There's, you know, there's architectural standards that will need to be followed. And that'll be processed through the city as this project, if it moves forward, would be coordinated with staff on that. But again, we wanted to make sure. But again, we'd want to make sure everyone was aware that the C store is not in the cards. When I say C store, I mean like a convenience store case.
Yeah, there's already one there, the depot, yeah.
So that's all I have for now. I'll take further questions if anything comes up. Thank you.
You know, I would, thanks for your time. I would just bring up that there is currently underutilized commercial space one and a half miles away. You know, over by where the Pizza Ranch is. Those places aren't even full right now. And so I'm concerned that this is, again, not in line with what the neighborhoods look like around here. And we already have underutilized commercial space less than two miles away.
Anybody else wish to address the commission?
I, I do have one other comment. I just want to make sure that the commission is aware that, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the comp plan does indicate this, this particular use as a, on the comp plan. And so I just want to make sure everyone is aware that it does comply with, follow the comp plan. I know folks, there's always concerns about change, but do know there, in, in things mentioned about, you know, whenever we're going back to the seventies, well, folks do need to know that trends in the housing industry do change over time. You know, not everybody can afford, you know, a, you know, large property or, or that. And I don't want to divert to that, to the other, the other case that was just being heard, but I want to stay focused on this one. Is this is, this particular mixed use is here to serve this neighborhood so that we can have more walkable communities and people don't have to jump in their car to go go to the ice cream shop or get, get a haircut or that sort of thing. Yes, I do realize that there's maybe some underutilized space two miles away. I take your word for it. By no means would this be built if there's not a need for it. So that's all I have. Thank you.
The problem is, is that this is in the middle of nowhere. There is no hair cutting places anywhere around it. There is, this is in between North Liberty and Correville in the middle of nowhere. There's no transportation to get anybody anywhere. And to follow up on that point, not only is there space like this being underutilized in North Liberty, I lived in Correville down by the depot, and there was space that was sitting there that had Hates Convenience Store in it that switched hands, that had a meat market, that had a church that got switched over to and that, that had multiple people in it that has gone under. And so this space between North Liberty and Correville has had multiple businesses in it that have not been able to keep a store in it. So I'm saying that people need to be able to walk to and from, putting something in the middle of those two areas, there is nothing there.
Yeah. And, and the intent was that this, this would not be the first thing that was built out there. This was more or less to piggyback on the rest of the development plans and the potential residential house tops that would be.
Why does anything have to be built out there? I mean.
I mean, theoretically, it could stay a cornfield, but I don't think that's realistic. I don't need to go on any more detail than that.
Anybody else with any further comments?
Wouldn't it seem appropriate to wait on this until resolution has been attained on the other one?
The, the downfall, and we were contemplating tabling this one, but depending on how, you know, the other project goes forward, we want to piggyback on the same, kind of the same schedule as the the project that the commission just voted on. And so if we ask, if we table this one, then theoretically council would not be able to act on it next meeting if, if that's indeed what the other project does.
That would seem appropriate, actually, given the other two votes. It's all.
I think it, I think it goes back to what we talked a little bit earlier, and thank you so much, Lauren. I know there's a lot of work that goes into this, but what we have is a multifamily situation here, the housing, and it's just, if we think back to what, how we, how we felt about the, the density there with the other project or the, the other, the other piece of the, the meeting tonight, is it, it just, it, it just doesn't go, in our opinion, in this particular area. It's just not something that, that we would feel like would be something that would fit, fit in. We're concerned about the precedent that it would set as well, because again, you're talking about multifamily type of housing and, and, and I know that there's plenty of that around as well.
And I would like to just bring up again, with empty spaces already available, that, you know, this isn't going to just hurt our short little neighborhood. It's going to really hurt that community where the Pizza Ranch is, because those are going to be less competitive because they're older and those are already dead. So if you're trying to piggyback this on with this new development, you're talking about starting this on the same, at the same time as the other developments, that's really not in line with waiting till it's needed, which means that that you may be, even if this does happen, you would be hurting a community that's only a mile and a half away that already can't keep those slots full. So this isn't good for the surrounding neighborhoods either.
Pulling business away from some of those North Liberty businesses, potentially.
And Correville.
And Cor.
Just so you know, a, a, a good design standard for quality neighborhood design is to have walkable communities. And, and what that means is by having mixed use, commercial spaces like this, I, I don't disagree with you, what the statements that you've said at all. I agree with them. That's in a vehicle driven world. When it comes to walkable communities, which that is the trend in today's, you know, planning and neighborhood design standards, it's to have those commercial mixed use pockets every half mile away, mile max.
You know, it's interesting you say that because I, it makes me think about not only what Shelley's point was at the corner of Oakdale and then North Liberty Road or First Avenue. You have the, the now the depot, and you have some businesses that have struggled in that particular strip mall. But then additionally, if you go further west down Oakdale and you get to the corner of Twelfth Avenue in Oakdale, there's that little plaza that's also struggled. Businesses have gone, gone and went, and I think there's some emptiness there. In addition to that lot that's on the corner that has been sitting empty for a very long time, because I think there's hesitation in investing commercial real estate there as well, because I believe it's zoned for that. I, I could be wrong. So I, I think the risk is high as it relates to some of that commercialization going on with the, the, this particular.
Anyone else wish to address the commission? All right, I will now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to consider the approval of the rezoning?
No moved.
Moved by Wenman, seconded by Taylor? Discussion.
And this is Mike. I, um, I find it a bit ironic that we just complained about a whole town going into this area. And now we don't want any commercial property in there. I, I think it makes very good sense to have a small lot, which is essentially what this is, zoned commercial. If this evolves into a four hundred unit, you know, acreage or, or eight hundred or whatever it ends up being, it, it seems to me like it, it makes a lot of sense to have a small amount of commercial, as, as I think it was Lauren had pointed out. And, you know, there's no commitment to, to, you know, build something right now, but I, I really like the idea of walkable communities. And the other thing I'll say in, in general about this whole project is that we, we've talked about how there's nothing there, but there are schools there. So all these kids who are, who are living in this area will be able to walk to high school and be able to walk to elementary school, which is, which is fantastic, I think. So I just wanted to throw that out there as well.
Any other commission members have anything? Dave, you have anything to add? Or Scott? All right, we will now vote on the approval of the rezoning.
All, if, if, if I may. I was, I was muted before. Now, now I think I got everything straightened out on the tech side here. I just wanted to note that we didn't go in as much detail through conversation on this piece, but if this, this property is, for, for, for reference, this one is two point three one acres. This is currently zoned RPUD one residential planned unit development. And they're proposing this mixed use project at this location as well as the PUD A site plan before you. This property is being plotted as part of the Forever Green Heights development. So because of that, they are actually applying. So it does make sense to keep these and continue these on the same path. You know, that being said, what's being proposed right now is approximately twelve thousand five hundred square feet on the first floor, an additional twenty five thousand square feet and, and approximately twenty eight residential units on the second and third floor. Based on the concept that's been provided and the staff review that's been done, parking can be met on this. This property was the, this property is consistent with the comprehensive plan of land use designation of mixed use. And again, I would just note for, for the commission, what we're looking at are, are things such as development density, conformance with the land use plan. Traffic are all fair considerations. However, once we start deciding, you know, who can and cannot succeed in business and where they should locate and how that may impact, that's not really germane or relevant to, to the consideration of the board. You know, one could equally argue that competition spurs investment, creativity, innovation, those sorts of things. So I, I would just note if, if we stick to those other findings of fact, that would be a, a fair assessment for, for the applicants. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any further discussion on that? Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Wen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Aye.
Fessler?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Wenman?
Yes.
And Aaron's?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Do I have a motion to consider the approval of the PUD A site plan?
No moved.
Moved by Wilson.
Second.
Seconded by Taylor. Discussion. Any further discussion on this one? All right, we will go to a roll call vote on this one as well.
Knutson?
Yes.
Wen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Fessler?
Yes.
Wenman?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Any new news to consider, Dave or Scott? For next month?
Uh, no, not at this time.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Sir, might I, sir, might I ask, can we get minutes of this meeting?
Absolutely, of public record.
And we, we, you'll have them online?
They will be, they will be prepared and they are posted in draft form online.
Okay.
If anybody, if anybody wanted to reach out to me, many of you actually on, on this Zoom meeting have already done so. You have my email address. I'd be happy to coordinate delivery of those minutes via email if, if that's easier for you as well.
I'd appreciate that.
Just, just send me an email requesting it and I'll get, I'll get that information out to you once we have that prepared.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Moved? I didn't, I missed it.
So moved.
Moved by Knutson, second.
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 Second by Wilson. We are now adjourned.
All right, thank you.